Good evening and welcome to the February 4th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. We welcome those that are watching us on television and all those that are with us this evening. Due to the state regulations, we do have Ms. Madeline, Councilmember Madeline Scales-Harris, is on Zoom with us. Wright, Madeline? Are you there?
I'm correct.
She's here. Great. All right. To begin our meeting, Mr. LaLance is going to do our prayer and pledge.
All right, I'm ready. Y'all bow with me.
Lord, thank you for today. We thank you for all the blessings in our lives. Lord, we hope that you will help us not take those blessings for granted. Lord, pray that you will be with those who need you tonight in so many ways, just their well-being, their health, financially, every way that you help and comfort us. God, we pray that you'll be with us as we meet tonight and as we discuss matters of the city, and we pray that your will be done. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You have council, you have the consent agenda before you. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? No comments? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye. Our second item is the minutes, approval of the city council minutes from November the 7th, 2019, to January 30th, 2020. Any questions or corrections?
No move.
Got a motion from Mr. Wade.
Second.
And Mr. Martin. Call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye. And our old business land use matters ordinance 20-046, Board of Zoning Appeals, member compensation, second reading and final.
Second.
Ms. Wright, Mr. Wright, and who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, Mr. Wade. Call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye. All right, and new business sewer allocation variance. And there you go, Mr. Renat. There you go. Greg?
Good evening. Counsel before you tonight with a proposed development request for additional density above the sewer allocation ordinance zoning allowance for a Waffle House located at 2383 New Salem Road. Murfreesboro Water Resource Department concurs with the request based on sewer system capacity, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Wade?
Second.
Mr. LaLance. Ms. Wright, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye. Number 18 is another sewer allocation variance.
Thank you. Counsel before you again tonight with a proposed development request for additional density above the sewer allocation ordinance zoning allowance for Andy's Frozen Custard located off Franklin Road. Murfreesboro Water Resource Department concurs with the request based on sewer system capacity. I'm available for any questions.
Questions? Can I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Mr. Lance, second.
Second.
Mr. Wade. Please read the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye. All right, we have a resolution, and this is a budget amendment.
Good evening. Tonight for your approval, we have some budget amendments from our general purpose fund and our federal projects fund. They were approved by our school board on January 19th. The general purpose fund is just some changes with some major categories, and the federal projects fund is COVID-related, and there will be no increase in fund balance for either.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye. We have another budget amendment ordinance 20-002.
Good evening. This budget amendment is needed to increase grant expenditures for transportation, community development, and police. These expenses are balanced with grant revenues, so no additional use of fund balances required.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye. All right, item 21, presentation of an annual audit report. Something we get to see you regularly.
Sure.
Good to see you.
Members of the council, well, I wish I could say like Ms. Bingham that I don't look 60, but I'm afraid I do.
Should I say, "Yeah, you're mean" again?
And I'm not quite there either. But I'm going to go through the audit reports and just kind of briefly take you through this report. It is available on the city's website now, so anyone interested can look through it. As you'll notice, it's a pretty thick report, being over 200 pages, so there's a lot of information in here, but we're going to hit some of the highlights. Again, we appreciate Melissa Wright and her department. They've been extremely helpful as always, and we always appreciate that cooperation and support. Once again, this report, or at least last year's report, was submitted for the certificate of excellence in financial reporting with the organization, the Government Finance Officers Association in Chicago, and it was awarded that distinction. And that states to the public and to anyone who looks at this report that it goes above the normal standards and is exceptional in its disclosures and information that it discloses above and beyond what's required. So that, and for many years, the city has been awarded that certificate. If we look, there's a tab that says independent auditors' report, and that's on page one and two. And once again, this year, the city has received our unmodified audit opinion, which basically means it's a clean opinion. So there's a lot of words there, but basically it says that the financial statements are fairly stated in our opinion. Just directly behind that, in the next tab, is what's called management's discussion and analysis. That goes on for about 20 pages. It, from management's perspective, tells about the prior fiscal year. It gives some discussion about the economy here. It tells a lot about the revenue sources of the city. One thing to point out on page three is that as of June 30th of 20, the general fund's unassigned fund balance was about $67 million. And what that indicates is that it's a reserve, basically what you might think of as a rainy day fund, that represents about seven months of general fund expenditures. So what that would indicate is that if all revenues stopped suddenly for some reason, then the city's reserve would take us through seven months of expenditures. So that's presented there. The next section in the tab says government-wide financial statements. As we've talked about before, and I'll just kind of briefly discuss it before, cities have two ways of presenting their financial statements. One is on what's called a government-wide statement, and that includes all assets of the city. It would include the streets and the fixed assets, the buildings, and also things like cash and current assets, but it presents the whole picture of the city, more from a long-term view. And you'll see on page 22, that at June 30th, again, we're talking about all the assets and all the liabilities of the city. Down at the bottom of the total column, you'll see it's $1.2 billion in net position. That means at that point, the total assets minus the liabilities of the city were over $1.2 billion. Now, that includes both the governmental activities, which would be the general fund and other funds, and it also includes the utilities. On page 29, the next page, again, this is from a government-wide perspective, so it's not based on the budget, but it includes all expenses like depreciation and more like a business operation would include all the expenses. But the way it's organized, it shows all the functions of the city, for instance, police or fire, and it goes down through the functions of the city and shows first the expenses of that function. And if you look there, for instance, police, total expenditures for the year were almost $42 million. And then as you go across the column, across the row to the right, it shows what revenues we had to support that direct function. Now, police would have things like fines, that sort of thing, would be charges for services, then they would have some grant activity. And as you go across to the column that says governmental activities, that shows the total cost of that department. And that total cost is supported by taxes or other sources of revenue. And for instance, for police, we had a total cost of just over $41 million. And down below, as you go down below, you'll see the sources of funds, the taxes, and other sources that support that, those activities. You also see there's an education line, and there's streets, other functions of the city. Each one of those, you can tell the cost that that function had. Now, the other presentation that's in this report is called the fund statement, and that's more of a budget perspective. We're only talking about assets that we have available to support the budget in the coming year, and we're only talking about liabilities that are current or going to be paid fairly soon. And this is where, if you look on page 24, in the general fund column, down at the bottom, you'll see the unassigned fund balance that I was speaking of, the 60, almost $67 million there at the bottom, the general fund. And that presents all the major funds of the city, the general purpose school fund, of course, is the schools, and the other major funds of the city. If you flip on over to pages, page 26, this shows the governmental funds of the city, first column being the general fund, and this is on a budget basis, so it includes the revenues and expenditures for the budget year into June 30th. You'll see, for instance, in the general fund, the total revenues were almost $170 million there in the first column. And then down below that, you'll see the expenditures of the general fund totaling over $113 million. And as you flip on over to page 28, the general fund is detailed and shown with the budget of the general fund, so that's a lot of detail about the different departments of the general fund and the budget that was enforced during the year. That has, goes on for several pages, the general fund. Now, the next tab says notes to financial statements, and there are about 70 pages of notes about different aspects of the city. There are descriptions of the accounting policies used. There are a lot of information about assets, including infrastructure assets, that sort of thing. There's information on the pension funds and retirement plans available to the city employees. And on page, there's a lot of information, especially about debt. Page 65 is where that information starts, with the long-term debt. So a lot of information presented there. And back in the next tab, there's a tab called, let's see here, supplemental information. And if you go on back to page 154, there's detailed information about the investments of the city, and also information about changes in long-term debt by individual issue. Those are presented on page 166 and 67. And what you might note there, that during the current year, current fiscal year, the city refinanced some of its notes, took advantage of the lower interest rates, and converted that to fixed rate debt with a much lower rate. So that information is presented here. The next tab says statistical section, and what that does is give a lot of information, historic information, about the last 10 years and different aspects of the city. One thing to point out on page 174, this shows the last 10 years of the major tax revenue sources. And for instance, you can see there, under the sales tax column, 10 years ago, in 2011, the city collected $29 million. And this past year, in 2020, the city collected $49 million. So an increase of $20 million in that time period, which is a real indication of growth in the city. And the only, the last section is the single audit section. There are schedules there that show a detail of all the federal and state grant revenues by program, and those are presented there in detail. So I think that's got us through pretty quick. Hope I didn't go into too much detail, but that's, be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Joe? How many years now this has been recognized as an exceptional document?
It's been, I think it was the 22nd year in a row, so.
Quite amazing. When I first looked at this, came on council, I mean, this is a little different than looking at my budget. So it was impressive. And every time you've come up to explain this to me, I've learned a little something and got a page that I need to turn to. And I really appreciate you coming in and helping dissect this frog for us, because it's been a, it's a complicated document. And Ms. Wright, thank you for all the work you and your staff to get this to them, to do such a competent job of presenting it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Once again, a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, Ms. Scales-Harris.
I think it's interesting, when I look at sales tax, actually, in a COVID year, sales tax went up, which is kind of, you know, I know we were concerned about how that was going to show. About six months into the year, we weren't sure exactly what it was going to be. So thank you, guys, for continuing to purchase stuff in Murfreesboro. All right, is there a motion?
So move.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye. All right, who's going to present this? Okay. I have a request to advertise, request for competitive sealed proposals.
Good evening, members of council. When I was before you last spring and presented my recommendations for the city's property or casualty and liability insurance policies for fiscal year 2020, I told you that it was my intent to put those policies out for bid for fiscal year 2021. After thinking about this and talking with some people, I think the best approach would be for the city to engage an insurance broker, brokerage firm, to provide the city insurance brokerage services and risk management consulting services, and to have them manage that bid process. And that, there would still be a competitive bid process, but it would be managed by that consultant, because they are the experts in that field, and be able to identify things as well as place, provide some value-added services to complement the in-house risk management program. So I'm requesting permission to put this request for, issue this request for competitive sealed proposal and to get a brokerage firm under contract.
Any questions?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Mr. Gore, are you up? Distribution monitoring panel replacements.
Sir, so some fairly routine items before you tonight, but worthy of the regular agenda. So the first item is two distribution monitoring panels. This is a sole source purchase. It is budgeted. It's under our budgeted amount, but it's subject to legal review. We're having HAC review some revisions on some terms and conditions of the contract. These distribution panels basically monitor water quality at our tanks, and that gives us some indication if we may have a problem in the system, and we can isolate that problem. We have them currently, but they're about 12 or 13 years old. The technology is wearing out, and so this is just updating it with the newer technology of what's pre-existing right now. So we would ask for your approval, subject to legal review.
So move.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland, I'm sorry, Mr. Shackleton.
We look a lot alike.
Came right out.
It was cute when you called him Mayor Bragg. Walter Hill Park erosion repairs. Glad to see this on there.
Yes, sir. Well, this is an engineering proposal with energy, land, and infrastructure in the amount of $24,960. I've got some pictures that kind of show you some erosion disrepair that's occurred over the years with stormwater runoff. So right now, we're looking at maybe a quarter million dollar project. Not all of that may be eligible for stormwater funding. It's going to be up to the designer to let us know how much of this is with stormwater management to prevent this from happening in the future. So, well, we've got an estimated cost of $260,000, but this $24,960 is proposed to be funded from the stormwater fund, and so we would request your approval on that, and I'm available for questions.
What's, where does the rest of the other $235,000 come from?
Well, that's to be determined. Some of that will come from stormwater, but some of it may be requested from, it may all come from stormwater. It's basically going in, there's going to be some stormwater management to hold this water back from sheeting and doing this again. But if we're going to be doing some pavement replacement or some concrete replacement out there, that's probably not, really shouldn't come from the stormwater source.
Oh, I got you.
See what I mean?
Place was a very special place as I was growing up. It used to be a real gathering place for our community. Glad, didn't realize it was 11 acres out there, so that's.
Well, that may include part of the, that may include the dam and part of the backwater. I'll tell you, that dam's, well, just to go on a little rabbit trail here, since, you know, we're just talking. That dam is a big, big deal for us with the ability to hold that water back and be a water supply source for our water plant. So we want to keep that dam safe and keep that dam in good repair.
All the repairs holding out there? All the repairs that were done to the dam are holding?
Yes, those repairs have been done, so that dam is rejuvenated.
That's great.
Rehabilitated.
Rehabilitated. We all need a little bit of that. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion and a second. Call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye. One last thing, TDOT Salem Highway Phase II proposal for appraisals.
Yes, sir. This is just the Salem Highway widening Phase II, which is between Old Fort and Interstate 24. When TDOT asked us to get our utilities outside of there right away, we have 14 properties affected needing utility, primarily water line easements. So we have to go through the appraisal process to determine the offer that we would make them for those easements. So we've got Boozer, a proposal from Boozer and Company. It'd be $2,400 per property. We have some contingency, additional service time in there, about $2,800, but the total service agreement would be $36,400. So we would request your approval, and are available for questions.
All right, any questions? Can I get a motion?
So move.
Motion and?
Second.
Second. Call the roll, Ms. Wright, please.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Beer, we have beer permit tonight.
We do. We have a new location at 1644 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. This location meets our requirements for the background check as well as codes inspection, so if it's approved tonight, we can issue it tomorrow. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Call the roll, Ms. Wright, please.
Vice Mayor Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye. Don't think we have any board commission appointments tonight, but we do have a statement.
We do, mayor. This statement is for some remaining grant funds from Christie Houston for the technology. Center. The use of those funds have been fully met, and the person in charge of the Technology Center and the person in charge of Christie Houston have gotten together and decided for the rest of these funds to be returned. As the city was in charge of the grant allocation throughout the building of the process of the building itself and outfitting it with their needs, we would be the ones returning the funds. So I put that on here because it's not something we budgeted to do this way, and I just want to make sure you're aware.
All right. We need a motion to approve that, then?
We do.
Okay, I need a motion to approve statements?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
All right, that's all I have. Other businesses, is there anything that needs to come before?
Yeah, I have two things. This is for staff. Mr. Huddleston, you may can help me out with this. First thing, council members, I think we heard that the Kroger on Middle Tennessee Boulevard is going to be closing, and we want staff to start working on that immediately, trying to find a replacement for that area. And then the second thing, we, I've talked about this for the last two years, and I think this is appropriate time to bring it up. I'd like to change Mercury Boulevard from, starting at Broad Street to South Relaford to Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard. Every major city has a Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, and if you, I went back, did my homework, Nashville has one, Chattanooga has one, Memphis has one, and Jackson has one in Tennessee. I think we need to make that step and make that happen. I did some research already as far as, there's 400 and over, a little around 400 residents on Mercury Boulevard, 39 non-residential, and you got 364 residential, and then you got four multifamily development right there. So I'd like for us to consider that and have staff start working on that immediately.
Could someone speak to the kind of appropriate motion we need to be?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Protem. Shacklet, good to see you guys tonight. Want to get that right. So what we have traditionally done when we've been asked to study name changes is our planning staff will conduct a study, look at the pros and cons, the benefits, the impacts, and we'll bring that report back. Our planning commission typically has authority for street names. We adopted a policy sometime back at the planning commission to review street name changes with public health, safety, and welfare in mind, and so I think we'd want to make sure that we're consistent there as we can be. We'd also want to check and make sure that the name options are appropriate for E-911 if we can go forward with the name. And my recommendation would be for us to bring a prepare report and then bring that back to you for further direction. And it would take, I would think, a couple, three weeks for us to collect that information and assemble the document.
Do you think we need any kind of motion now, other than that direction from council to?
I think the direction from council is fine now, because it wouldn't be an official action to change the name by anyone. It'd just be a request for the study and information.
Any comments about any problems with going ahead and directing? Is there kind of a consensus of council to go ahead and direct staff to look into this? Mr. Wade, thank you. This is very good that you brought this up in a very appropriate month to be looking into this. February is Black History Month, and it would be a very appropriate thing to do. I'm glad you thought of that. Are there any other things to be brought to council? What's the score on the basketball game that? Okay.
Real quickly, next Wednesday, we'll meet in workshop at noon, 11:30, and that's on the 10th, and then the 18th, we will meet for council meeting, and then we'll see how it goes, depending on what it looks like on the agenda, perhaps not have a meeting on the 25th.
And we got the legislative session on the 18th also, Craig?
We're back at the police department. I don't know if we've decided that yet, whether we're going to be back at the police department or the airport.
They advertised the airport.
We advertised the airport, I think.
Okay, that's fine.
You know, exercise that building a little bit.
For next Wednesday?
It's next Wednesday.
It's got some great technology out there, so.
On the 18th?
On the 18th, we're working with our legislators to bring them in before the council meeting so we can have a conversation with council about what they're seeing at the legislature right now and what they're hearing, and get feedback that council would have for them.
And that's at 4?
And that's at 4 o'clock on the 18th.
And our, what do you call it, advocate or whatever it is, our representative at the legislature is going to be there as well, so.
Yes, Fera will come down.
What do you call that? Lobbyist? Yeah, okay.
Governmental affairs.
I got you. Ooh, don't say lobbyist.
Governmental affairs.
Okay, just take that out of the comment section. Okay, all right. Madeline, did you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to tell you you've done a great job and that you even look like a mayor.
Well, you're kind. Looks can be deceiving.
Home on TV, apparently.
Thank you, love you, lady. All right, folks, if there's anything else to be brought before council, if not, we're adjourned.[1711.41]